Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for the invocations. On our God, present, up! I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation from Father Jim Churn. Lord our God, we thank you for the men and women first responders of West Orange when the face of all tragedy, acts of evil and harm, put others before themselves and attempt to serve them to the best of their abilities. We're grateful for your providential care and we ask your continued guidance over the people of West Orange, especially the members of the West Orange Fire Department, men and women who are dedicated and put their lives on the line in service of their fellow citizens. Tonight we pray especially for Al and Steve as they are promoted to deputy chief and captain, as well as Will and Leon who are probationary firefighters. Have you told us throughout the Word in Scriptures, those to whom much has been given, much is required. May these men look to you as a source of perseverance, strength and wisdom as they assume their new duties. Continue to pour down your love, your mercy on the people of this great community and most especially to those pledged to serve it. Heavenly Father, we ask all this in your great name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you everyone, please take your seats.
Mayor Parisi, Council President Garino, members of council, the administration, thank you very much for allowing us to have our promotion ceremony and swearing-in ceremony here at the council meeting tonight. It's always a pleasure to have swearing-in ceremonies and swearing-in new recruits and the promotions, but it's also especially wonderful to have it here in the form of our government and to participate on such a great night for our department as well as our township. So again, thank you very much to everyone. Well, let's get to what we're here for tonight. It's a very important day, as I mentioned. We're here to celebrate the fact that we have a promotion to deputy chief and we have a promotion to captain and we're celebrating two new employees, two new firefighters who, technically speaking, is a promotion also because they're coming from the civilian ranks to the ranks of a firefighter, probationary firefighter. So we're very excited to have everyone participate at these three different levels of ranks within our agency. Now, the West Orange Fire Department is a very proud agency. I'm very proud to be a part of this agency. I'm very proud that I've worked with all these great men and women of our department. One particular person I'd like to point out tonight though is that she helps out all the time with these ceremonies and she helps out prepares everything we see here today, but tonight is a special night for one of our own members. And that's because Mickey Wagner's son, Will here, this guy right here, is being sworn in. So Mickey, congratulations. So instead of participating, you can actually, you know, in setting this up here, you can actually sit and watch and enjoy it for once. So thank you. So let's get on to what we're here for, because I know they have a packed agenda here for the council tonight, so I appreciate their consideration to have this today. But Mayor, I'd like to welcome the Honorable Mayor Robert D. Parisi to swear in our probationary firefighters. Okay, first to get sworn in is firefighter recruit Will Wagner. Mickey, would you like to come up? Anybody you want, anybody you want. Whoever you want. Come on guys, everybody up.
Yeah, come on. Come on.
I will be adjourned. I state my name.
I, Will Wagner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
And in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And to further solemnly swear.
Further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
For the office of firefighter.
For the office of firefighter.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Our next recruit firefighter is Leon Sederwald.
I state my name. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
And to further solemnly swear.
And to further solemnly swear.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
For the office of firefighter.
For the office of firefighter.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
Our next promotee is an individual who's going to the rank of fire captain. Firefighter Stephen Millie, soon to be captain Stephen Millie, has been with the department, I believe, since 2005. He was one of the first groups, one of the first groups that I've had the privilege of hiring in the department. And Steve is an exceptional person in his detail to his reports, his detail to his job, his detail to all of his abilities that he does as he performs his job as a firefighter. We can count on him on the fire ground, we can count on him in the firehouse, and I'm very proud to say that he's going to be promoted to the rank of captain because I know that his leadership skills will be put to the test and he will be up to the challenge. So Steve, come on up and congratulations.
You sort of do your job.
I state my name.
I, Stephen Millie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And to further solemnly swear.
And to further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
For the office of deputy chief.
For the office of deputy chief.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I just asked Al or Deputy Chief Souza if he'd like to invite everybody to the after-party, but he declined, so that saved 10 minutes on the meeting. So what I'd like to, on behalf of our promotees, is that if anybody would like to join them in celebration, they are meeting at the Elks at 7:00 on Main Street, and if you would have the time and opportunity to stop by, please come by and celebrate and say congratulations to our promotees and our new employees. Council President, thank you for letting me take up some of your time. I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor.
Chief, before you leave, again, on behalf of my colleagues on the Township Council, we congratulate the promotees. We wish them much success in their careers. We know you're a vast asset to the residents and the township of West Orange. We thank you for your faithful service. We are here as the council to support you in what you do, and we thank you. We cannot thank you enough for you put your lives on the line every day for the residents of West Orange, and we sincerely, sincerely appreciate it, and we wish you a long and healthy career. Thank you.
... five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building West Orange and filed in the Office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilman Cirillo.
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Council President Garino.
Present.
Mayor Parisi.
Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to, after we had a great ceremony with promotion to members of our fire department whom we congratulate and which wish them continued success in their firefighting careers and service to the residents of West Orange. Tonight, the mayor has two proclamations to present. The first is the mayor's proclamation for the Relay for Life.
It's obviously no secret now, I'm going to be introducing Lisa at some point. She's kind of jumped right up here, so, perfect, no problem. Council President, I do want to thank you and the council for allowing us to do the promotions here earlier. We don't always get a chance to do that, but I do think it was nice to have it in council chambers tonight and have the council a part of that. There is none of us that has not been touched in some way by cancer, and unfortunately, that usually means touched in a bad way. West Orange has been blessed to be not only home to a Relay for Life for several years, but to have countless number of people who give so much of their time and money to this effort each year. Hundreds and hundreds of people participate and sleep out, and more importantly, thousands donate, and though Lisa can tell us the exact amount, we're over a million dollars now since the inception of our relay, and that's very special to go to cancer and to support the families who deal with this. So, going to introduce Lisa, she's going to talk about this year's relay. The proclamation, council president, members of the council, is to officially declare that May 15th and 16th of this year will be officially relay days here in West Orange. Lisa's been part of it for any number of years, certainly as far as I remember, and has been a super, super supporter and great resource to not only this initiative, but nearly everything she touches in town. We're lucky to have her and lucky to have her as part of this.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm Lisa Renwick. I'm a resident of West Orange. I feel like we were just here doing this a year ago. This year went very, very fast. We're actually two and a half weeks away from relay this year. We're actually a month earlier than last year, so I have a bit of a cry for help. We need more people, we need more money. You know, unfortunately, every day we hear of someone new having cancer. More recently in town, I think you may know James Reitberger passed this year. We recognized him last year as he went through his battle, and unfortunately, we lost him. One life lost is one too many, and if I can do anything to spread the message and to have someone have another birthday, that's a job well done, but unfortunately, sometimes it's out of my hands. So I ask for you and this community to come on Friday, May 15th, to West Orange High School, 6:00 PM. It's a beautiful evening. If weather cooperates this year, we'll be outside on the field. You don't have to sleep over, although part of our motto is "Cancer Never Sleeps, So Either Do We." So the intent is that you are walking the track throughout the evening. Someone from your team should be walking at all times so that you understand and feel what cancer is like. I'm sorry the fire department left because I wanted to give them a kudos. Last year, they were a part of Relay, as was the PBA and many West Orange schools, including the high school, who's very much a part. So we're looking for the community to come together for one night. We have a beautiful survivor ceremony, so if you know any survivors or caregivers or you want to recognize them, we do a beautiful luminary ceremony where we, for $10, you can purchase a bag, have their name put on it. It's lit around the track and in hope on the bleachers, as long as a slideshow with the scrolling of their names. And it's a way to honor, it's in memoriam, and it's just one small piece that we do. At this point, you know, anything you can give is helpful. I know there's some car washes going on, some bake sales, the Girl Scouts are going to start selling some, I think, rainbow looms, you know, whatever you can do. I'm going to leave some flyers here, share them with your friends, your church, your temple, your nail salon, your bagel place, wherever it is that you frequent, that's where I'd love your help. I'm only good as, you know, you tell two friends and so on, so on. And of course, right here, these are my greatest and dearest supporters, always, and I thank you, because without them, I would not be able to continue to do my job. And so, thank you, I hope to see you on May 15th, and thank you, Mayor, as always.
Lisa, way to help tell people how they can contact you?
Yes. Well, on this flyer, you'll have our website, and it's a way you can get on to our URL to register or donate. My name this year, yay, is not on it, which means I'm getting less phone calls and emails, but I'm still very much involved. I'm your event chair, I'm a volunteer this year, I'm not employed by the American Cancer Society, who Relay for Life is run by. But Taylor, my new counterpart, her name is on here, and she will be happy to answer any questions, but you can find me. I'm on the water coolers, I'm on Facebook, I'm in town, Lisa Renwick. I'm a sub in the district these days, I'm serving at McLun's, as Mayor Parisi can attest. So, you know, I'm wearing many hats, but anyway, you can find me, and hopefully you'll start seeing, this weekend is, we're painting the town purple, so you start seeing purple ribbons, some posters around town, and so the electronics ticker by Cody, hopefully Ozpak, and the high school will have our information as well. And we have a Facebook page, so you can find us there.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Appreciate it, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Mayor, we have another proclamation. Mayor, for recognizing Nurses Week, May 6th to 12th.
Actually, I guess this goes to Lisa. Thank you, Council President. We had a chance earlier in the evening to celebrate our firemen. One of the other blessings we have here in this community that many people might not know is that we have registered nurses as part of our township family, under the direction of our health officer, Teresa De Nova, part of our health department, work across the parking lot here. So it's not only appropriate to celebrate what they do, but also to honor National Nurses Week, which will be celebrated this year, May 6th through 12th. We're going to share in that celebration with the theme of delivering quality and innovation in patient care. Obviously, you don't have to go far to surf long on the internet to find the issue of healthcare as being such a pressing issue, and there are 3.1 million registered nurses nationwide, certainly on the forefront of this battle, helping and working hard to keep all of us healthy. So I'm honored to recognize, we're honored to be part of a community that has not only registered nurses working for the township, but any number of nurses as part of this community, family members that have all been part of that proud tradition. So we are honored to recognize them with this proclamation, and I'd like to at least invite up our registered nurses, Sue and Lucille, to come up, accept this proclamation on behalf of this community, as we join with them in recognizing National Nurses Week, and more importantly, thank them for their service to our community and to our residents.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for this recognition, Mayor and council. It is our pleasure to continue to serve the community, not only during Nurses Week, but to stand proud, to be part of health promotion and prevention as part of our health department. We are always available to all of the residents. We do a variety of services, from small children up to the elderly during not only flu season, but throughout the year, and it's Lucille and my pleasure to continue to serve the town in such a capacity. Together, we have probably close to over 36 years, if not more, of commitment to the town, starting my 26th, and Lucille is 610th year, and we are proud to be part of such a wonderful department and such a wonderful community. Thank you very much.
And on behalf of the Township Council, we'd like to thank you for your service to the community. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Parisi, for being with us this evening and with happy times and celebrating happy events in the township of West Orange. Thank you, Mayor. Right now, I'll call for council liaisons, Councilman Cirillo.
Yes, just wanted to report that at the Degden House, we're ready to go out for bidding. The bids are going out. They're due the 5th of May, and that's for the window replacement project, as I've been speaking about, this project for a while. Now it's going to become a reality, it's coming to fruition. Again, we're going to be changing every window in the facility to energy-efficient windows, so all of our residents will be getting new windows throughout the Degden House. The construction itself is expected in June, in June of this year. That's all I have to report for now, Council President.
Thank you, council. I have one to mention, we have a certificate of recognition for the West Orange High School Wind Ensemble. Is there a representative here tonight?
No, I don't see one.
Then we'll hold off the next one. Okay, thank you. Councilman Kukoviac.
Thank you, Council President. The West Orange Historic Preservation Commission met last week and announced that it had reached a approval with conditions for the downtown redevelopment project at commonly known as Prism that pretty much settles the application by Prism to make additional changes over its previous approval, and there were some minor changes to the agreements. I don't know if it actually has legal status right now, but the two sides have reached agreement, so that can move forward. And just as background, the Historic Preservation Commission is required to provide a certificate of appropriateness to any changes that are being made to historic building in town, and of course, that's part of the Edison Project. So the two sides took a couple months and came together, and they have the approval now, or should have it very soon, to move forward.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney.
Okay, thank you. Our next planning board meeting will be on May 6th here in council chambers. The West Orange Environmental Commission will meet on Thursday, April 30th. We're meeting with Liter of Light, L-I-T-E-R. This will be something I'm anxious and excited to talk about. It's going to be a community-wide build of circuitry that would go to countries that have been devastated, such as what Nepal is going through right now. So our community can build circuits that would provide solar nightlight to...
Then we'll hold off the next one. Okay, thank you. Councilman Kukrovjak.
Thank you, Council President. The West Orange Historic Preservation Commission met last week and announced that it had reached a approval with conditions for the downtown redevelopment project at commonly known as Prism, that pretty much settles the application by Prism to make additional changes over its previous approval. And there were some minor changes to the agreements. I don't know if it actually has legal status right now, but the two sides have reached agreement, so that can move forward. And just as background, the Historic Preservation Commission is required to provide a certificate of appropriateness to any changes that are being made to historic building in town, and of course, that's part of the Edison project. So, the two sides took a couple of months and came together, and they have the approval now, or should have it very soon, to move forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney.
Okay, thank you. Our next planning board meeting will be on May 6th, here in Council Chambers. The West Orange Environmental Commission will meet on Thursday, April 30th. We're meeting with Liter of Light, L-I-T-E-R. This will be something I'm anxious and excited to talk about. It's going to be a community-wide build of circuitry that would go to countries that have been devastated, such as what Nepal is going through right now. So, our community can build circuits that would provide solar nightlight to countries that experience such devastation. I will keep you posted as that progresses. And the West Orange Chamber of Commerce, tomorrow evening at the atrium, they will recognize CAS Realtors as a Business of the Year. Again, for the fire department, we have recognition on Captain Thomas Belli, Captain Brian Aker, firefighter Stephen Cusano, and firefighter Jonathan Gonzalez, receiving recognition from the chamber. From the police department, this is a Community Awards Dinner, Sergeant Andrew Berkery, Sergeant Dennis McCool, and Officer Raymond Rosania. Educator of the Year will be Cecilia Ferrara, and St. Barnabas Medical Center is receiving special recognition for 150 years of service to our community.
Thank you, Councilwoman. My presentation for, of course, the West Orange Downtown Alliance, please, and I've said it before, mark your calendars for June 6th, Main Street, from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Main Street. There'll be free admission, there'll be free tours of the Thomas Edison Laboratory complex, there'll be a classic car show, a touch of truck, over 100 crafters, artists, and vendors. There'll be a beer garden and food court, and there'll be the famous Slide the City Water Slide, the slip inside will run down Mont Pleasant Avenue. Please go to the website to register, to get your tickets for it. It's going to be a fantastic day, if it's a warm day, it'll be even great. To mention, just coming with vendors that are going to be at the Main Street, down at the street fair, we have Hobby and Home Handbags and Soap, we have MetLife Home and Auto, we have Power Home Remodeling, we have jewelry by The Inch, we have New Jersey Arts Incubator, Regal Bank, Rebus and Essentials, Avon Products, PSENG, we have National ovarian Cancer Coalition, we have the Design Concept, and we also have the TNR West Orange program that'll be there. So, I hope you'll all make the time to come, it'll be a great time. And at night, we'll have our music festival, which will feature the weeds, the grip weeds, which will be a fantastic backup band for major performers in the area and national. So, I hope you'll spend the time and enjoy it with us. And last but not least, there is also the Cinco de Mayo Festival to be held at the Oak Barrel, with proceeds to provide scholarships to the footsteps for the Exceptional Child Summer Camp Program. It's going to be a great event at the Oak Barrel on Sunday, May 3rd, it's not Cinco de Mayo, but it's May 3rd. It'll be $15 general admission, it'll include a Tex-Mex buffet, and there'll be a cash bar, and everybody's going to get a vote on people's chilis. It's going to be a cooking contest, it's going to be really, really great, and I hope you can make it there. And one last announcement from the County Department of Economic Development, there will be a jobs fair, which will be held on Thursday, May 21st, at Essex County College. Please feel free to visit the website, I'm sure Mr. Paglisi will be able to give us more information, and hopefully, people looking for jobs in the area will take advantage of the job fair. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Council President, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On Downtown West Orange Alliance?
Yes.
Did we receive a grant this year, or do we have funds available for the Cleanup Day that we hosted last year? Do you know?
I'm not sure. I will find out, Council.
We have the Clean Communities Grant, comes out of the Department of Public Works with Nick Solis, because he's our recycling coordinator. So, it's not through the Downtown West Orange Alliance? No. It's a town grant.
It's a town grant.
It's not, you have to submit your criteria for it, but it's not a grant that you have to apply for. The fund, we do receive the funds from the state. As you know, we're working on that initiative to help clean our post offices.
Right.
So, we'll talk. Thank you, Council President.
The one last announcement I wanted to make, that major sponsors for this year's street fair are PSENG, MetLife, and Regal Bank, will be there, be major sponsors for us. So, it's going to be a really great and exciting event. June 6th, from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So, mark your calendar, put it in your phone.
Edison, Thomas Edison.
And the Edison, right, and also another partner is the Edison National Parks, so they're one of our major partners, and so, and come down to see the Edison Labs. If you've lived in town all these years and never been to the Edison site, you're missing a great, and your children will love it. It's a great event. Okay, Madam Clerk, we'll move on along. Would you please read the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building West Orange and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Kukrovjak?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Carino?
Present. We've already had our pledge of allegiance read by the West Orange Fire Department on our guard, so I will now open the floor to public comment. Sorry.
It's okay.
Anyone wishing to speak to the Township Council, please come forward. Thank you. Good evening, Roz, how are you? Please state your name and your address, please.
Hi, Roz Moskowitz-Belsky, 11 Wedgewood Drive. I am so happy to report that Charles Brown, Road Guru, Senior Research Specialist at the Alan Voorhees Center for Transportation at Rutgers, has received a grant from Partners for Health in Montclair, shout out to Kathy Smith. And this is huge, because Charles Brown will, who will analyze the crash data and provide a safety plan for us to use on Pleasant Valley Way. So, that's huge. It's a real game changer for us, so we're happy about that. And looking to the future, we can start to plan the charrette that we're having at Pleasant Dale and invite, I mean, I guess, you know, we're kind of running out of time, because that's what happens this time of the year, but maybe towards the end of May, maybe first week in June. And, you know, I did send a letter out to Sanjeet Voorhees, who is the county engineer, about the resurfacing. We had heard that possibly, and Lenny Lepore can verify, that June might be, the Pleasant Valley Way section might be resurfaced, I don't know, but we just have a question about that in the timing, because we would like input on how maybe we can calm the road in certain spots, make it safer in front of the school. We were looking at lowering the speed limits and increasing the pedestrian crossings. So, these are all really good things, I'm glad that, thank you, council members, especially Jerry Carino and Susan McCartney, for really taking the initiative on this. And I do urge you to support the ordinance for the Pedestrian Safety Committee, because we need, this is all coming together. Actually, and really, you know, we started this in July, our first meeting was July of 2014, so it's less than a year, so we've really done a lot. I want to thank everybody in the community for really seeing this as a positive thing going forward, the safety of our citizens. We're working with Safe Roots to School, Lori Caffler is going to head that up, and there's a lot of grant money out there. We can definitely, we can definitely raise a lot of funds to, let's look at Degnan, you know, maybe we can actually have a roundabout at Degnan, and we can meter it off, and we can have people walk around it. I know, these are, you know, these are just possibilities, so thanks again, and let's get this committee going. Thank you.
Thank you, Roz.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to follow up on what Roz says, and a little bit of the backstory, that she's talking about the public meetings that we're planning, we haven't had a date set yet, but it is for an action plan, and this fellow, Charles Brown, and also our acting planner, will help moderate and facilitate a public meeting, so we are looking for input. Thanks to the engineering department, we have full-blown copies of maps of the area, so that we can use that to actually post on it all of the information that we get from the public. So, as soon as we set a date and a time, we're planning on two meetings, we'll post it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, Councilwoman.
Council President, I would like to call up, as I spoke to you, our Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Rodolfo Rodriguez, just wants to make an announcement about a new effort that he's undertaken called the Hispanic Foundation, an initiative to assist residents of Hispanic descent.
Deputy Mayor?
Welcome.
Good evening, Rodolfo Rodriguez, 22 Ashwood Terrace.
Isabel Strode, 36 Virginia Avenue.
Okay, we're here to announce that we have been working on a Hispanic foundation for the bottom of the hill. That includes the downtown area, the valley area as well, and Isabel is a business owner, as I am myself. And we have been meeting with Hispanic business owners, with the community itself, and Father Miguel Hernandez, who has been working with this foundation. And we have already started meeting at 315 Jacoba Church, which is Main Street and Franklin Street. There, we already have been offering for the Hispanic community, and all the community in general, basically, English as a second language for free in the afternoon, Saturday, 3:00 to 5:00. And for the first time in West Orange in this area, mass Spanish, mass Catholic in Spanish on Sunday. In the past, people used to go to Montclair, they're still going, but we're trying to promote this as much as we can, and to St. John in Orange. So, this is something that is really working out. We have been working very hard, meeting with business owners and people in the streets, trying to build up a Hispanic foundation. The goal of this foundation is the business owners know their customers, know their community, the community know who they are, working together. So, the goal, the main goal is to teach our community how to educate the kids, help them raise things like immigrations. Some people, because of their immigration status, they don't report stuff, I mean, crimes and things, because they don't know. So, we're planning on bringing experts on immigration to talk to them. My area, which is nutrition, work on that, you know, eating well, education in general, tutoring, things like that. So, Isabel and myself and a few other people, we have been working really hard in town. The good thing is that we count on the support of Mayor Parisi, which is great, and now we have Councilman Cirillo helping us, and I really encourage everybody else to work with us, because keeping people off the streets, you know how hard it is when we come from our country, we come to a different country, and we feel that we are still in our country, and we don't know sometimes how to behave, and we bring our country to here. And this is a different ballgame. So, this is something that is really working out. Our next meeting is Friday, the 8th, at 8:00, at 315 Main Street, the church. Please, if you can spread it out, we want as many people as possible. That day, we're going to select, but we already had a meeting, a few meetings, but this past meeting, we didn't select a name for the foundation, but we want the public democracy to come with different names for this foundation. And we do appreciate the help, the support, and I don't know if Isabel has a couple of words to say.
Good evening. So, also, I want to extend your hand as a group of councilmen to support us, but I was telling Rodolfo, I do want the Hispanic community to feel part of West Orange, not to feel segregated as a left side, or not being perhaps American. So, I want the Hispanic community to educate and grow and cultureize Americans if they are here. So, we do not want to perhaps, as he said, be and behave as if we were in our country. We want to be American also, and support and help our town. So, this is the main goal, educate the Hispanic public here. All right?
Thank you. For the support. Thank you. Anyone, yes, Mrs. Kukrovjak? I'm tongue tied today.
Good evening, Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I must say, I was quite disappointed by the statements Mr. Gross made, both at the last council meeting and in the most recent edition of the West Orange Chronicle, about the proposed solution for the problems concerning our sound system here in the council chambers. As you may recall, I first brought up this issue last summer, of how difficult it is for many residents, both here and watching at home on video, to hear what's being said by the council and members of the administration at these meetings. Since that time, other residents have expressed their concerns of their inability to understand what speakers are saying, not only during council meetings, but at planning and zoning board meetings as well. And since last November, when the administration spent nearly $24,000 for cosmetic improvements to these chambers, is a number reported in the Chronicle, and that included a whole host of things, including replacing the tabletop of the council dais with granite, Mr. Gross had been promising us a new sound system to alleviate the problems of either low volume or buzzing noise emanating from the microphones. But now, it seems the administration has done an about-face. After months of research into the problem, Mr. Gross basically acknowledged at the last meeting, the only way to solve all these issues is to install a brand-new system. But the administration is reluctant to do that, because, as he said, it's an expensive solution estimated to cost between $10,000 and $15,000. I can't help but note the irony here. At the August 12th, 2014 meeting, when I first raised the issues about the sound system, I also spoke about what I considered were Mr. Sayers' mischaracterizations of the construction bids for the Valley Police Substation. At that, at a previous meeting, Mr. Sayers had said that the bids for the substation were, quote, "a little bit higher than originally budgeted," when in fact, the bids had come in at more than $200,000 higher than budgeted. I was concerned that in order to go forward with the valley project, other budgeted capital projects, such as the new microphones, might be deferred. Both Mr. Sayers and Mr. Gross insisted there was money available through what Mr. Gross called "old capital" that would cover the substation's total price tag of $352,000, which included $15,000 for signage and $12,000 to pay an area that's actually smaller than my driveway. Mr. Sayers said the substation project needed to go ahead is originally bid because, quote, "the people in the valley wanted the project," unquote. So, I have to ask, what's different with the sound system? People who watch council meetings in chambers or on video, or attend planning or zoning board meetings, want this project. Okay, so the bids for a new sound system may come in 10 to 15 times higher than originally budgeted, but it's still a fraction of the cost of the substation. I'd suggest, rather than spending more people's valuable time investigating speakers in the back, or sound dampers, or requiring the videographer to mess with the sound's volume during the actual meetings, which usually takes place, or worse yet, requesting residents move to the front of the room if they want to hear all the proceedings, which, by the way, doesn't solve the issue for viewers at home, why can't we find the money and the budget to replace the old substandard system? $85,000 to replace perfectly good bleachers on the school district's property, its high school baseball field, was deemed an appropriate use of taxpayers' funds last year, but $15,000 to install a state-of-the-art, fully-functioning sound system for one of the most important meeting spaces in the township is deemed too expensive. I would strongly urge the administration to reconsider its position on this issue. I'd also urge the council members to advocate for this project on behalf of the people they represent, who have asked for it. And I would thank you in advance for people to speak in the mic. I noticed that tonight, the mic is, the sound is up high, which is great, but please, it's not that easy, there are only certain portions of this microphone that you hear from if you talk down here, it's gone. So, I'd ask that everybody please speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wanting to speak to the Township Council? Please come up. Yes, Mr. Paglisi. Good evening, sir.
Hi, Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Just wanted to share a few events, upcoming events, that the county is hosting. First, on May 2nd, is our Household Houses Waste Collection Day, from 8:30 to 4:00. That's in Cedar Grove on Fairview Avenue by the old hospital center. To follow that up, on May 16th, which is two Saturdays from then, is our Computer and Electronics Collection Day, which is 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, at that same site in Cedar Grove. May 21st, which you alluded to, Council President, is our Job Fair, which is at Essex County College, that is from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We do encourage anyone who does, who does come to bring plenty of copies of resumes, and the... And the, there's probably at least 100 vendors or businesses who will be at the event. And the catch is that they could only come to the event if there was a guarantee that they had positions open to hire people. So the vendors that you see there are indeed looking for new employees. And we do track, we do try to track the people who come in and see how many jobs are created from the fair. And from last year's event, we had probably about 650 jobs that were created that we can account for. And then finally, on May 30th, at Turtleback Zoo is the annual Essex County Open House. That's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Free admission to Turtleback Zoo and anyone can come out and learn what county government provides to its residents. Also throughout May and June, we have a series of fishing derbies at a number of our parks. And there was a question about the paving on Pleasant Valley Way. There are actually two projects. I mean, it's the same road, but it's cut in half. So Eagle Rock to Bloomfield Avenue, which goes through Verona. And then from Eagle Rock to Route 10 is on the paving schedule. I cannot give you an exact date on when that's going to happen because it is weather contingent and we do start at certain roads. And when one road is finished, we move to the next one. So as I learn more about that schedule, I can share that with you. And of course, the county is working with the town. We do, are open to suggestions. And as long as the proper studies are done and ordinances and resolutions are passed, we have no problem instituting any improvements that have to be along those roads. And that's it.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Anthony, you can understand our concern about the paving because, you know, the timing, as grateful as we are that the county is looking at paving Pleasant Valley Way, if we are planning these action plan meetings, we're really asking the county to hold off until we get some of that because if it, until we get some of the ideas from that action plan in place. Because if it does entail striping or changes, we want that to happen before the actual paving happens. So that's why the timing-
Let's see if we can coordinate the meetings that you're having with when the paving is going to happen.
Right, that's what we need to do.
I can go back and, like I said, when I, when they, when I get the schedule for the paving, I can share that with you.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Town Council? Yes. Robin, good evening. Please state your name and address.
Robin Miller, Forest Hill Road. I have been a resident of the town since 1996. I've been an employee of the town for the last 10 years. I have been your Planning Board Secretary for the last four years. The past three without a director. We are about to, you've passed a budget. This will be the third one without a director. I hope that with the coming 2016 year, you consider hiring a full-time director. Our township needs a full-time director. We deserve a full-time director. Our whole department is the Department of Planning and Development. This is not easy for me to be up here doing this. We, I am there every day. We need a full-time director. Our township motto is "Where Innovation Lives". We need a director. Or not a director, we just, we need a full-time planner. Thanks.
Thank you, Robin. Are there any other residents wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open responses to my council colleagues. Council Miss Cirillo?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Roz and Rodolfo and Robin, thank you for your proactiveness and that commitment to our town, our municipality. We sit here and it's like, we don't even know what to say. If there's anything that we can do to assist you in your endeavors, we're here for you. But you're so proactive that we wouldn't even know where to fit in. But you know, we're always a phone call away. Just know that. The same thing with Mr. Rodriguez. It's a very inspiring initiative. It's really what I, the reason why, why we invested in West Orange, why we bought a house here is just because we all care so much about our town. So I just sit here proudly about who we're representing. So again, if there's anything that I can do, I'm always a phone call away. Robin, thank you for, you know, for your words. Robin actually came out on a Saturday morning, I think it was last week, one of our residents, Jan. Councilwoman, how are you? Jan Carden has been working on, by herself, cleaning up the post office. So we actually have an upcoming meeting with the postmaster to talk about preventive maintenance and to talk about how they can provide Jan some access to print some flowers and beautify our town. So Roz, if, you know, maybe you two can connect, you know, as part of the Pleasant Valley section. And we're hoping that, you know, after that meeting, we can beautify, you know, that stop, which is a stop for many, especially on Saturdays. Also, I see Chief Smiralos here. Congratulations. I want to wish the new guys all the best as they work on keeping us safe, keeping this community safe. And thank you for your vision and your proactiveness and making sure that you have the tools that you need to move that, to move that vision forward. So, Council President, that's all I have to say. And hopefully, later on, the administration can talk a little bit about the sound system, which I spoke to Matt Prior. He said that he's tweaked some things and it's probably the reason why we sound a little better today. But hopefully, there's a long-term plan to address that matter. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kroviek?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Ms. Silvestri has already talked to me directly about my problem with talking into the microphone. So if you hear me breathing heavily in the background, I'm sorry. But this is the way I keep peace at home. But she is right. When I listen to the video on both the DVD and to a greater extent, on the town website, it's hard for me to hear what my fellow colleagues and people speaking from the administration and also from the public are able to hear. And I know I've spoken to many people here in the council chambers who said they can't hear what's going on. So I promise I will try to make a better effort to be heard. And I also just want to reiterate, I think it's extremely important for us as a council to make sure that we make it as easy as possible for residents to know what their government is doing. And I think a key part of that is to make sure that the sound system works as well as we can make it so that people can know and understand what's going on. So I also would like to hear where the administration stands on this because it just seems that we've spent a lot more money on cosmetic improvements to the room. And this is perhaps the most important thing we can do to make sure that people have it as easy as possible to understand what their, what their government is doing. Ms. Moskowitz, Bielski, thanks very much for coming to bring us the good news about the grant. And please keep coming back so that we keep up with what's going on and also the people in the Pleasant Valley area that will be directly affected from this also keep up with what's going on. So I know you worked a long time to get these things moving, so please keep it up. I'm happy to support the foundation efforts any way I can. And Ms. Miller, I appreciate you coming up and talking. And because I agree with you, I think the township could benefit a great deal by having a full-time planner. It's, even though we may not be doing a lot of brand-new development, there's a lot of things that need, in this, in our township, a lot of issues that need to be addressed, I believe, by a full-time planner. And I, I understand that we're saving money by not having one, but I'm not sure that the cost-benefit analysis on this issue stands going forward. So thank you. We'll try to talk about this a little bit more on the council. I'd like to hear from the administration on this issue as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. Not much more to add. Chief, congratulations on your team. And Isabel and Rodolfo, I did want to say that 10 years ago, we did have a Valley Neighborhood Preservation Program. Victor and I served on that. It was a five-year plan. And one of the strong components of that was hosting meetings at Hazel Avenue School with that English as a Second Language program that was implemented at that time. We can look back at that and see what we can, if we can find any funding, either through Sustainable Jersey or some type of collaboration with the schools now because the schools are also certified through Sustainable Jersey. And if there's a collaboration between the towns and the schools, we can do a program that can look at that. So-
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chief, congratulations. And my compliments to the department, our support to the department, and you should be very proud of your men, chief. They represent you and the township very, very well. So thank you and congratulations. Ms. Moskowitz, Roz, you know, it's been a great, you know, experience working on the Pleasant Valley Way and on our whole safety and pedestrian to make the township a lot safer to traverse our thoroughfares and for our children to walk to school. And I'm looking forward to when Charles Brown presents his study on the entire township because what Roz mentioned too is that this study is not just for Pleasant Valley Way, but it represents a total study of the entire township of West Orange. And we, and we thank you. And I look forward to continued working along with Councilwoman McCartney on the issues of pedestrian safety and our corridor. Claire, Ms. Silvestri, I agree with you. You know, you have some times, I'm losing my hearing. So, you know, you want to, when you're watching the television at night, if it doesn't come through clearly. So we need, we'll need to talk to the administration about that. I, believe me, I understand sometimes I can't hear and I got to turn it all the way up. And it drives my wife crazy because the whole house hears it. To Rodolfo Rodriguez and his, you know, he should reach out to the entire town council and community because we're here to help. We're here to support our residents and to make living in the township of West Orange, you know, an easier and a more comfortable existence and to experience a great life that we offer our residents in the township of West Orange. To Mr. Paglisi, thank you. To the county, and thank you for the services you provide us. And we hope to work closely with you. And yes, we know, we should communicate more with the county and work and just, you know, when there's an open line of communication, things get accomplished. So they're great things. And tonight too, hopefully with the passing of the ordinance on its second and final reading of the Pedestrian Safety Commission Advisory Board, it'll be another step forward for our community. So thank you. And thank you to my colleagues for your comments. Madam Clerk, moving right along, consent agenda?
Okay, approval of minutes of previous meeting, executive session minutes and public meeting minutes of April 14, 2015.
Consent. Consent.
Report of Township Officers, Municipal Judges' Report of March 2015.
Consent.
Readings of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
No.
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman Cirillo?
We don't have any right now, Councilman.
Okay. Councilwoman Kroviek?
I'm not sure about whether Agenda Item I, the resolution authorizing the municipal budget to be read by title only, how that figures in with our public meeting on the budget. But I just wanted to flag that because there's also an ordinance on second reading about the cap bank. So I just wanted to sort of ask the question about how all that fits together because I certainly want to have a bit of discussion about the budget. And, but I'm not sure how all these different pieces of legislation in the, in the public hearing work together.
Can the administration answer, or Town Clerk, can you answer the Councilman's inquiry?
In reference to the resolution that's on for this evening to read by title, that can remain in, on consent. There, we are going to have a hearing tonight as well as adoption of the cap bank ordinance. Two separate issues, not tied together. So there's no issue of order there.
Okay. Councilman, answer it.
Yes, thank you. I just had, also had a question on Agenda Item F, Resolution 124-15, which is a resolution authorizing an emergency contract to eliminate the overflow of sanitary sewage in the basement of a home in town. I'm not going to identify the town. But I see our town engineers here, Mr. Lepore. I just wondered if you could perhaps come up and just talk about the ramifications of this because in asking my questions, it seems as if a small, what would appear to be a small problem at a single house, obviously, the people there don't think it's a small problem and neither do I. But in your email response to my question, you had explained how you thought that perhaps we might have to build a new pump station that had a cost of about $5 million. And so I just wondered if you could just come up and just explain if, if, if we actually have to do that for a single home. Because it seems to me, if we're going to spend $5 million to help a single house, that perhaps maybe we can work out some other way to fix the problem. If I, if, and if I misunderstood your email, I would stand to be corrected.
If you want me to address it now, that's fine. I'm not going anywhere. So if you want me to come back after, if you want to take this off consent, it's up, it's up to you. Okay, however you want to do it.
We can wait, we can get through our whole agenda and then you'll be here, Mr. Lepore.
If you're not going to pull the resolution.
Right, if you're not going to pull, you just have a question.
I think, I think Council wants an answer.
Right.
Exactly. Unless you say something that, that changes my mind, I intend to vote for this. But I just wanted to get an idea if we've got a $5 million project coming down the pike.
I think certainly, we can address the problem in this home by not spending $5 million. I think eventually, as the town grows, and not to say that it's going to grow to the extent that it has in previous years or decades, there will be a need to make other improvements to our sanitary sewer system. I don't see that happening immediately. One, there's just the time to physically construct those facilities would be several years. I think the fortitude to financially raise that money may be even further away. So to help this, this one homeowner now, who periodically, when we have very wet, or wet springs, particularly following a snowy winter with a late snow melt and a late thaw, we have inflow and infiltration into our main sewer, which parallels Pleasant Valley Way and the west branch of the Rollway River. This home is right adjacent to that river. This is a way to solve this homeowner's problem without having to, for him to wait for a multimillion-dollar project.
Okay. And just, I'm, I'm not going to pull this, but the, the resolution itself talks about the fix to this is roughly going to be $50,000 for this single home.
Yeah, I think it may be about 10, 10 to 15% less, but it's not going to exceed $50,000.
Okay. And do you expect that that would fix that problem permanently at that home?
Yes, it will.
Will it, will it affect any other homes around? Will it help?
No, it won't, it won't necessarily help, but it certainly won't adversely impact any other home.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have any questions for Mr. Lepore?
I do, Lenny, thanks. Welcome back from a well-deserved vacation. I was going to pull Resolution A. This was the resolution granting the waiver for the sidewalks on Colonial Woods Drive. Unless you can explain why we would want to grant this? Because there are hookups for homes on both sides of the road. So why, why would one side not have sidewalks?
Look, again, this is a new subdivision. Look, again, this is a new subdivision. It's the extension of Colonial Woods Drive. It's also an extension of Nance Road. This is in the Merklin District of Town, west of Pleasant Valley Way, north of Mount Pleasant Avenue, actually right up against Route 280. Roads leading into this development only have sidewalks on one side. That is the existing portions of Colonial Woods Drive that abut this development. Same thing with Nance Road. These roads have no further to extend. Nance Road will be extended as far north as it can. Colonial Woods Drive is going to go as far north and then curve to the west to meet Nance Road. These aren't going to be through streets. Given that the sidewalks in the, or the streets in the area predominantly have sidewalks on one side that lead to this, I didn't think it was an unreasonable request on the part of the developer to seek a waiver of sidewalks on one side. There are streets in this neighborhood that don't have any sidewalks. Some sections do have sidewalks on both sides. I thought it was reasonable to limit it to one side in this area.
Okay.
Any other council members have questions, Mr. Lepore? Thank you, Mr. Lepore. Councilman, anything else, sir?
No, not for me. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Spango?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman McCartney?
That was it?
None for you? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion moved.
It's moved. Okay. Is, okay. Sorry. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
The motion is carried. The consent agenda is implemented. Ordinances on second and final reading, 2447-15, calendar year 2015, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. I now open the floor for public comment on Ordinance 2447-15. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open the floor to my council colleagues. Councilman Cirillo?
No comment.
Councilwoman Kocoviac?
Yeah, I just would appreciate if the administration would just explain, when you hear establishing a cap bank, just to explain that this is not having any actual impact on the budget, but it simply reserves our right to perhaps exceed the 2% levy cap in the future. And just, if I said anything incorrect on that, I just didn't want people to worry in any other way.
Yeah, this is nothing more or less than a housekeeping item that preserves council's rights should there be a need in order to utilize these funds. This does not have any impact on the taxes or the tax rate. It is strictly just a creating, for lack of a better term, headroom should the township need it.
Thank you. Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes, thank you. That's, that's, I appreciate it.
Any other of my council colleagues wishing to be heard in this ordinance? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2447-15 on second and final reading?
Motion moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, Ordinance 2449-15, and ordinance creating Chapter 2, Section 61 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange entitled Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. Is there a motion to introduce and approve on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing.
Now we, thank you, Madam Clerk. Then we'll move on to the public hearing on the township budget. The meeting will come to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilwoman Spango?
Present.
Council President Garino?
Present. I will entertain a motion to open the hearing on the 2015 municipal budget.
Motion moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
The motion is carried. Council President, this is the time fixed for the public hearing on the municipal budget and tax resolution for 2015. The budget was approved on first reading by the Township Council on March 24, 2015, was advertised as required on April 2, 2015, together with a notice of hearing for this time. A copy of the municipal budget was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building as well as the public library. If anyone wants a copy of the budget, they are available here on the table this evening. Please come forward and take a copy now. Council members, listed on tonight's agenda is Resolution 127-15, authorizing the budget to be read by title only. Whereas NJSA 48:4-8, as amended, provides that the budget shall be read in full at the public hearing or that it may be read by title. If at least one week prior to the date of the hearing, a complete copy of the approved budget, A, shall be made available for the public inspection in the free public library, and B, is made available to each person requesting the same during said week and during the public hearing. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of West Orange that is hereby declared that the condition of NJSA 48:4-A, as amended, set forth in subsections 1A and 1B have been met and therefore the budget for 2015 shall be read by title only.
So you're going to say is there a motion to adopt Resolution 127-15?
That was, I think you have to go before opening the hearing.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person desiring to be heard will rise and give his or her name and address before speaking. I will recognize one speaker at a time in order of raising as nearly as I can determine. Address all questions to the chair. Where necessary, there will be referred to individual members of the governing body or municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget before us. School or county matters are not proper subjects of this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. I now declare open the public hearing on a municipal budget and tax resolution of 2015. Any members from the public wishing to be heard? Observing no further applicants from the floor, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Okay. Any of my council members would like to discuss any other issues before we make a motion to adjourn for this evening? Yes, Councilwoman Kocoviac?
Council President, as I said earlier in the meeting, I wanted to make sure that I had some say in the budget before we approved it. And I thought that that's what was going to happen. I know that in our previous budget hearings, I have lost a lot of votes on spending issues. I have some, a few issues that I'd like to just bring up before we close the budget process to try to lessen the impact of this over 2% tax increase on property taxes.
Councilman, your point, but the budget process has been closed. We voted on it, we approved it, and moved it forward.
The hearing has been closed.
The hearing has been closed.
But we are not asking the council to vote on the budget tonight. That will come at a, most likely at the next meeting. Because the town, once every three years, the township budget has to be approved technically by the state. And we just received their comments back, frankly, I just read them today, and you know, there was no time to react to, which are relatively minor comments, but still we needed to react to them. And since the agenda was already set back last week, there was no opportunity to do that for today. So there will be a vote, I would believe, most likely at the next meeting in reference to, or we will submit for vote, adoption of the budget and certainly, you know, any discussion can occur at that point in time. Most likely, there will not be a hearing because we had the hearing this evening and any changes that we're looking at at this point in time, I do not believe will require an additional hearing. But certainly, the discussion amongst the council would be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
That's very clear to me now, and I appreciate this. Just, I wanted to ask one question, and it has to do, as you may recall, I've asked some questions about the sewer assessment fee. And you've been very good at providing the cost analysis. I know that at the previous council meeting, we actually approved a request by the administration to delay sending out sewer assessments. And I just wanted to make sure that if we have to wait until the next council meeting to approve the budget, that we still have time to modify the assessment if the council so decides. And I'm not sure what the timetable is.
Actually, if council were to modify the payment for this year, for instance, if it was to say, I'm throwing a number at it, I'm not picking a number, if we were going to increase it by $25, there would have to be a second payment at this point in time. We're already moved forward in terms of, on the website, we're now collecting sewer payments at the rate as per the statute. That does not preclude council's ability to raise the rate. It would just mean that we would have to do it in two stages as opposed to one.
So we would actually have two mailings?
We'd have to, well, we've already done a mailing because in order to, we were given an extension till June 1st. In order to make that, we had to mail this week. So we're, you know, if this had been discussed perhaps at the last meeting and the council wanted to do it, then we would have been able to interrupt that. So the bills have been mailed. If, like I said, if there was an increase for this year, which the council still has the ability to do, we would just have to do a second round of collection.
Okay. Thank you. I just had one more question before we adjourn. And this seems to frequently happen, this seems to frequently happen where people come up during public comment and ask questions of either the council or the administration, or the council asks questions of the administration, and then it didn't appear like tonight that the administration had an opportunity to respond to any of those questions. And I just wanted to see, not only immediately for the meeting, but just going forward, if at the end of the public comment, if either the council or members of the public ask questions of the administration, that we should at least give the administration an opportunity to respond. I didn't hear that tonight, maybe I missed it, but I just wanted to try to allow the administration to respond if that's something that they want to do.
But I thought I asked the administration about this. I thought that, you know, that was mentioned. But we will focus more on that too, to make sure that's addressed. So.
Okay.
Anything else, sir? Okay. Yes, Councilwoman?
I wanted to make a comment to the administration that with respect to the planning secretary that came out to talk about the planner, during our budget hearings, we did expand the duties and responsibility of the zoning officer. Would that be helpful to some of the concerns that the planning secretary?
Yes.
I was hoping that that was going to be helpful.
Yes, but we have not implemented that until the budget's approved. So once the budget is approved, that will be implemented.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Before I make a motion to adjourn, I'd just like to thank the general public for being with us tonight, those attending tonight. Our congratulations again to the West Orange Fire Department and Chief Smeraldo. We wish them success. We hope you come in, and the nurses, and Relay for Life, to honor these people. We're a great community. We're a very caring community. You can see it by the people that we honor tonight and people that were recognized tonight for their service to the community. We hope you'll join us. Our next council meeting will be May 12th. Come on down and join us in person, or just please feel free also to email us with any questions. That's what we're here for. And thank you very much. Have a great weekend. I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Good night, West Orange. Have a great evening.